Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. It is 5:46 PM and we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence and a Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Here.
Galván, McCoy, Sharif.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. We will now proceed forward with public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. And the first speaker will be Mr. Robert Ray.
Thank you, Robert Ray Compton. My first comments tonight, folks, are going to be on behalf of the American Red Cross. Last year, when I became an ambassador for the Red Cross, I had no idea I was going to be this busy. You folks have all heard about Harvey coming to Texas, Irma coming to Florida, and what a lot of you folks probably do not realize, the Red Cross responds to disasters right here in Compton on an average of twice a week. Earlier this summer, it was up to three times a week. And these disasters here in Compton are more commonly referred to as home fires. Whenever someone's home catches fire and there's severe damage and the people are going to be displaced, the fire department automatically calls the Red Cross and we respond. The point I want to make is, you hear about the disasters on TV, but disasters come at all sizes and you never know when they're going to happen. And for that reason, the Red Cross is working with the Compton Coalition, and we're having what we're calling the Compton Repair-a-Thon. Saturday, September 23rd, at the Compton College, you can come and learn all kinds of ways to prepare yourself for any type of disaster. Learn how to prepare your own individual disaster kit. There's going to be first aid and CPR, hands-on training. You do need to register for these, and you can do so at Eventbrite.com. You can also call our Office of Emergency Management here in Compton, Stacy Barnes. Her number is 310-605-5670. There's going to be puppet shows for the kids, the Red Cross is going to be doing shows for the kids, the Shaky Quaky Earthquake House is going to be there. All kinds of things you need to know to be prepared for a disaster. Also, you don't have to go across the country to be a volunteer. We need volunteers here locally. Some of you may know, every Monday, I deliver blood from the Red Cross to hospitals all over the county. And if you'd like to become a driver, the vans are provided. Here's the telephone number, 213-610-6104. And also, you young folks over 18, if you'd like to do some volunteer work and learn and make a little money, we do have the AmeriCorps is hiring. And if you'd like more information on the AmeriCorps, their number is 310-477-1413. So, basic thing is, folks, Red Cross is busy. You can do a lot for the Red Cross right here at home. If you want to donate, you can go to redcross.org. You can telephone 1-800-RED-CROSS. And we're trying to get a blood drive going. I was going to try to get it going in the city, but it looks like we're going to be having it at our Long Beach office, chapter office in Long Beach. Now, Mayor, may I have time for my own personal comments?
Three additional meetings where you'll have, excuse me, two additional meetings today. You can speak. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Ms. Gilda Blueford?
Good evening, Gilda Blueford, 3rd District, Compton resident. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who came out to spend Saturday morning with me at East Francho Dominguez Library, where we discussed the marijuana initiative. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for showing up and doing an amazing job at explaining it to us. I would also like to remind everyone that we're having the Veterans Stand Down this weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and we are in need of monetary donations. We do not have enough to do what we would like to do, but we do have enough to do what we need to do. Also, I would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 10. In reading 8, 9, and 10, I realize that Agenda Item Number 10 is the best way to go, so I'd appreciate it if the council would consider a comprehensive impact study and ordinance to reflect the same and not to instruct the city attorney or the city clerk to proceed within an altered version. Thank you.
Mr. Roberto Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. My name is Roberto Rodriguez. I'm one of the teachers at Compton Youth Build. Last week, I came to invite all of you to our ribbon cutting over at our new space at the old Oleander, at 1108 North Oleander Avenue. And I mean, it's open to the community once again. It's next week at the Old Dollar Hide from 2 to 4. We'll have some of our young people present the space, and I'll also provide some of our delicious food that our culinary class will be making for all those who come. And on top of that, I want to invite anybody who has family members also that would be interested in joining our construction program to also come through and get to see what our construction program has been able to do within the last month and a half that they've been there on the site. You'll see the new walls. Right now, they're fixing one of the restrooms and putting up new drywall in there because it's a little, it's a little old. But yeah, so everyone's invited. And one last thing, and this is just from a personal point of view. So, some of our young people in our space are DACA recipients, and of course DACA is kind of up in the air now. And some of our young people are a little afraid because they don't know if there's legal services or if there's anything that, if there's anything happening in the community regarding DACA. I know that we've had two young people essentially kind of drop out of our program because they no longer feel safe. They no longer feel welcome. And I mean, that's, that's just horrible at so many different levels. And I don't, I don't know if the city council or anybody in the community will reach out to me to kind of provide or help me in some way, manner, or form to support our young people that are DACA recipients. But yeah, so thank you very much, and once again, I hope to see you all next week at our space. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Antoine Banks?
Hello, I'm Antoine Banks. I'm currently a student at Cal State University Dominguez Hills, where I major in digital media. I had an incident happen to me in the city. I'm from Compton too also, and I still live in LA County now. And I had an incident happen to me Friday night. The city of Compton hosted an open mic, and I attended, and during the event, someone vandalized and burglarized my car, and they stole basically merchandise from my car, which I needed for school. And it totaled to be about $2,500. It was a laptop that I just bought, which is worth $1,600, my camera, which is worth $400, and et cetera. And I was wondering if there's any type of way I can be compensated, because the semester just started and it's kind of put me in a bad position.
Thank you. I'm aware, and I think the city attorney may be able to provide some comments because it did happen on city property, if our insurance will cover damages. I don't, I'm not saying that they will, but I think he is definitely, his office is the place to start. So, Mr. City Attorney, do you mind getting in contact, or if you know the answer already?
Well, unfortunately, the city does not cover for criminal acts. If you'd like to discuss it further, you can certainly come to my office, and I can talk to you more in detail, but the general law is not, we don't cover criminal acts.
Thank you.
So, where can I get that information?
I'm on the second floor of City Hall, so you can come up and set up a time for us to talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Irons?
David Irons, residence of Compton. I formed the Compton, California Historical Landmark Committee. It's registered, it was a nonprofit organization, but I'm really tired of the city tearing down stuff that I grew up watching, like the National Guard. You tore down the National Guard. Basically, it was originally white people was living in this city. So, it's like, we don't need a National Guard because we black and brown people. We need a National Guard as well, because they supposed to protect us and this nation. Another thing is, seemed like somebody should get in trouble for getting that National Guard torn down. It's not right. And this gentrification stuff that's happening, I got a committee called Anti-Gentrification and Anti-Rezoning Committee. They already told me I ain't going to be able to stop them. Basically, I know I'm probably the only one. They talking about tearing down Compton High School. That place was built in 1896. Somebody don't have respect for historical landmarks in this city. You need to get historical landmarks, and I'm against that regentrification, that gentrification, because it's happening all over the place. People, we are poor people out here. I am. Anyway, when you gentrificate, the people can't even afford to buy their houses back. It happened before, and I watched it happen before, right across the street from Martin Luther King Hospital. They redeveloped those people's houses, and they couldn't get them back. Guy around the corner named Mr. Butler, he fought against it, they left his street alone. If you gentrificate my neighborhood, I'm going to be the only one standing. I ain't selling my house. That's my granddaughter's house. That's who I'm leaving it to. We believe in leaving our family stuff. My parents are from the South. We don't like to be treated bad. That's why they left Mississippi, because we were treated bad. And it came to Compton, California because of the GI Bill. They started letting people move, blacks move into Compton. And the same houses that's in Lakewood, that's in Compton. Same floor plan, but the Lakewood, houses in Lakewood cost probably $200,000 more than at Compton. I draw floor plans, so I know what I'm talking about. So, anti rezoning. In fact, there's so many buildings faking lots down on Compton Boulevard, y'all could build some apartments over there instead of tearing down stuff. Those two lots down there, they could accommodate apartments, and you could have an underground apartment.
Thank you, Mr. Irons. Mr. Richard Earl?
Richard Earl, Compton. Last week, we, we went through a scenario over here about the planning commission and stuff like that. We don't need to go through that type of stuff here. We need to vet the people that we put up, put on these commissions, and we need to make sure that those people know what they do, and not just throw our friends on there and somebody who's going to do us a favor in the, in the future. We need to look at those committees as to what it can do for Compton, what it can do for our lives here. I mean, right now, this city is in trouble without having, without having people who are knowledgeable of the things that go on in this city hurts us. That's why we need to do it. My next item, item number 10. I think we need to do item number 10, option 3, because we need to do a comprehensive study on what the impact of marijuana is going to do to this city. We need to know, and the people need to know, what's going to happen? What's going to happen to the businesses? What's going to happen to our schools and our kids? We need to know that. And without knowing that, it's going to be hard on us. It's going to be hard just to stick something, for somebody to come in here, stick something on us, and we not fight it. Next, Veterans Stand Down, coming up this weekend. Now, I know that each and every one of you up there have money, and I think that we should put our differences aside, put our differences aside, and do something for the homeless vets. The veterans, the veterans that are homeless gave a lot. They did a lot for this place, and nobody may not be here if it were not for them. They, some of them cannot help it due to the fact that they are homeless right now. They can't help that, because if you've ever been in battle and you know what it is to have your mind taken away from you, you would be homeless too, and you would want somebody to help you. So, let's do something about, do something for these guys just once. Open up your pockets and please give something to the Veterans Stand Down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Mr. Holyfield?
To the mayor, city council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I have a couple of things to say, really. One, the Emergency Preparedness Program, I'd like to have the mayor, to have the city manager to give me a copy, give me a copy of our Emergency Preparedness. Emergencies are going on all over the world, so to speak, at this time, and we're supposed to have one. A number of years ago, my wife and I, I was in Carson, attending a program on emergency preparedness, and we graduated from that program. And then it came to Compton. I want to know, where is our list? And how did the people get it? I want to get mine tonight, if I can this evening, before I leave. Not tomorrow. That's one. And as you know, but I agree with Robert Ray, with the Red Cross and so forth, my granddaughter's involved with this situation. I'm involved. We're all involved. And if we're not now, we will be, we may be, and if we are, we want to be prepared. That's the issue. Now, I'm saying, I want to get into another situation. We have Barack Obama portrait on the wall outside. Why don't we name the Boulevard Willbrook after him? We're talking about this all-American city situation. We want to talk about things that are, like Mr. Irons was saying, in terms of things being named after people and et cetera. Let's do that in Compton. Let's put Compton on the map. Change Willbrook, keep the mural out there on the wall to Barack H. Obama, former president, 44th president. And why don't the people speak up? We're their bosses. We put them there, particularly the seniors, and I'm only 38, so don't misunderstand me. Put them there. I don't want to name Compton Boulevard because that go way, way back and goes to many cities, but let's do Willbrook, and it goes from one, from one powerpoint to the other, from the money to the wealth, from the Harvard to LA. Let's do that. And let's begin those kind of things and change this image as soon and as a team as we can. And only we can do it, by the way. And I got another 30 minutes, and I'll use that later, so thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield, and I do like your idea for the record. Ms. Lamika Pope?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lamika Pope, District 3. I wanted to congratulate Jane on the failure of the recall. There was a lot of discrepancies with the signatures that were actually sent in, so I'm very happy about that. Second, I wanted to find out, city manager, how do we get the treasurer's office to be a no cash office, where when you go into the office, you pay by credit card, debit card, and that's basically it? So, that's a concern of mine. I will be coming up probably really often, because today, when I went in to pay my bill, we still pay cash, and if you want to pay by your card, you have to pay $4 to pay with your card. So, I think that's a lot of money. And also, if your water is turned off for any reason, you have to pay a $25 restoral fee plus a $5 transaction fee, which is a lot of money. So, I would like the city council to look into that. Also, actually, I think that's it. So, if we can look into the water, getting the treasurer's office where you don't pay no cash whatsoever, you just pay with your debit card where you actually have a paper trail, I think that will, the citizens of Compton will be happy with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maria Villarreal.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maria Villarreal. Good evening. My name is Maria Villarreal. Did I say something funny? I heard somebody laughing. Oh, well. My name is Maria Villarreal, and my first meeting back. I'm here tonight because I am trying to put an event together for Saturday, and I know I submitted the application a little bit late, so I'm here to ask for a consideration and, you know, now that we have everything moving forward. But I've been having a little challenge at the city business license department. I'm not going to say names, but I think we can do this a little bit better. Thank you, Ms. McCoy, for your support last year, and I was definitely hoping that you, that we have your support this year. But I understand, when you can, you can, you know, but this event is for the, for the community. It's nothing political. It's just an event that we, the community, need. That anybody knows what we celebrate in September 16. For those who don't know, it's not Cinco de Mayo. It's a Mexican holiday celebrate the Cry of Independence of September 16, 1810, which started and revolved against the Spain, Spaniards. It follows for the Day of the Cry of Dolores. That was the city where the Mexican Revolution was, you know, finalized in September 15. And we called it the Cry of Dolores because the city where it ended, it was the name. It's just a holiday that we celebrate, and we asking, you know, see if we can help us, you know. We were denied the permit that was given to the owner of the property. So, I really would like to see what we can do about it, because at this time, we have the flyers done, and it's Saturday, and it's a community event, and the only thing that was denied, it was just the stage. We can have a stage and we can have horses. It's very simple. So, please take a look at it and let me know. I really, really appreciate this help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy, do you? So, from my understanding, they're requesting a permit just for a stage? They're not requesting a waiver or the city to do anything special? Are you requesting that the city supplies a stage, or that you all are able to have a stage?
At the beginning, we submitted the application requesting the support of the city since it was going to be on the district of Ms. McCoy. We were hoping there was the same thing we did last year, because that's a repeat event. So, okay. So, what happened, we submitted the application this year, and it was denied because we didn't submit it on time. And in order for the city to approve, it had to be submitted 90 days prior, I believe. So, I understand that. So, we say, okay, Plan B is that we provide what we need, which is need the license.
Okay.
So, I wrote a floor plan, and they crossed, you know, some items, and they approved only the owner of the business.
Thank you. The owner of the business approved the, did I understand that correctly? Approved the?
So, no entertainment, no horses, no, I have all the paperwork here. Somebody wants to take a look at it.
This seems really simple. It seems like a, a, a community event, and so you just need the city to approve a permit for a stage?
I want to do things the right way.
Okay.
That's why I need the city to approve. That's all.
Okay. Can we get this done? It seems like a standard annual event. We supported it before.
Can we ask the planning to come up to explain to us exactly what the issues were so that we can, yeah, because there was some problems with it, and I, from what I understand, so we need to find out, Mr. City Manager, or Mr. City Manager?
Sure. Dean Jones came, was working with Maria on this issue, so Dean, you can come up and explain. Maria, are you asking specifically just for the permit? Do you need the stage too, or just the permit?
No, we just need the permit. We just need the approval of the floor plan. Which is need the approval of the floor plan and we're going to take, you know...
So you're going to bring everything, your own equipment, everything?
Yes, sir.
You just need the permit to be on the property?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, City Council. This was a special event request that came in, and it was about twelve days before the event. Our, our situation is forty-five days. And she was, she was given a notice showing that information. Now, we helped her go for another plan, which was to work with the business owner and have an outside sales permit, which is twenty-five dollars. But with that, there's no staging that we can okay for because we'd have to have the fire department approve it. So it would be resources that we would have to undertake.
What is the, what is the fee for the permit if the stage is approved? Is there a fee?
For, for a special event?
Mm-hmm.
No fee. We usually absorb those costs. Now, if it's a carnival and some rides and things like that, there's various fees for that. But most of the time, we, we, we looked at waiving some of the fees.
Well, how much are the fees or internally?
It varies depending on how many different attractions you're going to have.
Okay, so Mr. City Manager, it seems like you have a handle on this. Do we do an estimate of what it would cost to approve? They're not asking for a city stage. They're asking for approval to have a stage. It just seems really simple. We should be helping the community, do positive things, not hindering them.
So if you, you're just going to have your own stage there? Do we need the fire department to approve the stage?
Correct.
Okay. So, and you need this done this weekend?
This Saturday. From ten to eight.
Let, let me check with the fire chief and if the, the body wishes to grant the, for us to give the permit, we can try to expedite the... There's, we're going to, we normally, something like this, we're not going to charge her for.
I think he stated that there's no charge for that.
Well, the, the permit that she does have is an outside sales permit. It's twenty-five dollars, and she's already paid that.
She already paid for that?
Yes.
But for, so she just want us to give her a waiver for the stage?
I have the floor plan. I just need a permission to have a stage for the program. That's all I need.
So the only thing we're asking for is for the fire department to approve it?
So Chief, can you come up and just, is that, is that doable? Can we do it between now and Saturday? Approve the stage?
He's saying yes, and we all know that we've seen events pop up in twenty-four, forty-eight hours, so looks like we can get this done. Great news. I'm glad.
All right.
Sounds great.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last, what happened?
I'm sorry. So originally, the request was for the city to provide the sage and the booths and that kind of thing. And because it went to the appropriate department and the process was that we had to do it in, in that amount of time, that's why it wasn't approved. Now, I understand that all she's requesting is the fire department to do the approval, but originally, it was not approved because she was asking the city to supply quite a few things.
I understand. I understand. Thank you. Ms. Alicia or Alicia Rival? Yes? Are you all here? No? Alicia or Alicia? Cindy Leavitt-S.
Hi, I am here in regards to, to speak in, what is it? Action number, item number ten. I'd actually like to, I hope all of you guys pass this, especially you, Mr. Sun. Well, there's two points I want to make. I want to actually pass no number ten just because in regards to although there are false claims of you reducing city crimes, we are actually, there's in the last six months, there has been five hundred and thirty-seven violent crimes here, eleven hundred and forty-seven property crimes. We are thirteen percent higher than all of California in our crime rate and a hundred and thirty-four percent higher than the national rate. So I think the violence here is very much accounted for, and it has been increasing as opposed to the fake news that Ms. Asia Brown likes to claim. And the second point is, if we are going to be passing this special ballot, can we also, as a community, request to have a marijuana committee so we can also keep everybody accountable here? I, looking at the referendum that you guys are offering, it's two percent, but it doesn't show how much of the breakdown is going to go to environmental and actually education. And that way, if it does break it down in a sense, that we can actually remove Measure P and Measure C. That way, we don't have to, we can lift those items and we also can just write down on that. And within that special election, I think there should also be IRS or FBI investigation into who is also going to be coming in here. There's two people that came in here very happily and very late and looking very high, and I just don't trust somebody that's been on board for thirty years and money's constantly missing. We don't hold that person accountable. So until maybe we can dig in deeper into the City Council and also their money's properties until where it's going, especially you, Mr. Centers, I think then we should be able to bring in, bring in that option on the special ballot as well.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you mind just scheduling with the captain an opportunity to update the community on the crime stats? I get my stats directly from the Sheriff's Department. It's the only way to get your stats. That's the only way we get stats. And so everything's verifiable, and I think it's great to have the, the captain come and present. We're not going to have talking from the audience, ma'am. We all know the rules. We're going to stay according to the rules. Thank you very much.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Ms. Joyce Kelly?
Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly from the Third District, where my councilperson falls victim to anything. First off, on your number thirteen, this legislative service for a hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is nine thousand dollars a month, is this for a lobbyist in Sacramento? I want to know how much money has a lobbyist brought to Compton? In all these years, you've been paying nine thousand dollars. Next one we'll see is one for the federal government, a lobbyist. Why can't, instead of you going out drinking at some Indian reservation, why don't you take that money and go to Sacramento and ask for money? You're not getting any money in here yet. You can't pave our streets, but you're giving nine thousand dollars a month to a lobbyist just because other cities have lobbyists. Nine thousand dollars and you all want a raise? Special election for a raise? Nine thousand dollars? Hundred and eight thousand dollars? Put it together and buy some slurry to go over some of those potholes that you're throwing rocks into. I don't understand you people. Am I stupid? I thought marijuana in Compton was banned, was illegal. I wanted to know, when the people said no, what is it that you guys don't understand? It's only a two-letter word. Why are you going through all these options? How much is a special election going to cost? Miss City Clerk? No matter what, we're going to fight it. When we say no, why can't they respect us? When we say we want our roads, our streets fixed, why can't you do it? But yet, you want a pay increase? I really don't understand your form of thinking. But then I guess this is not a government for the people, by the people, of the people. Where are the people? You are not just the people. Some of you don't even live in the city of Compton. Alita, I'm disappointed. I am a firm believer in an education. We need people on the Compton School Board who are educated in order for them to be looked at and, and respected from those students that you're going to represent. How much of the California Education Code do you know? How much about the school district do you know? This is what we need, somebody to take care of our kids. And not just somebody who's going to jump up at a whim and get an attitude because somebody read for your position is not a game. This is our children's education.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, but you know what? Would somebody else stand before the mic, have longer time, then I should be doing the same thing. I should be respected that way. But I'm leaving. Thank you.
And I did let you finish your thought, Ms. Kelly. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I normally don't do this, but I did have two sons that graduated from Com, the school district, pre-K through high school, so I'm much aware of education issues.
Thank you.
Come talk to me. I'll tell you about my education.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I would like for the city attorney, I know that he have, have explained this before. I would like for him to just really give another short synopsis, a synopsis to show, share with the community how this item is, is coming to this ballot. Because it appears that a lot of people think it's this council, but it's not coming from the council. And I just really wish if he could just take just a few minutes to just explain that so they would understand it.
Thank you, Ms. Sharif. We have just one last speaker and then I'll ask, I'll give the Florida City Attorney.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Limboon?
Limboon, City of Compton. First of all, before we even hear a word from the city attorney, I think all the council members really need to speak to Alex Padilla. Or you need to speak to some specialist in regards to the election codes. Because as a city here, we don't have to do what somebody walks into our city and tries to tell us to do. Number one, we are a chartered city. If you look at Election Code nine-two-one-two, which they seem to try to pass by. They want to quote nine-two-eleven, nine-two fifteen or whatever, but they don't want to actually quote that one. We're just like what Mr. Earl was stating. That election code tells you that there should be a report brought before each one of you and the people of Compton to say what this measure is going to affect this city, how it's going to affect the land use, the people here. Everything before you even take into consideration and even the cost. You don't have to do what somebody else tells you to do. Yes, the city attorney and Ms. Brown, they want this. They have received money from the marijuana growers. Okay? So, you know, yes, you have. It's right on your campaign contribution. I've told that it's supposed to be legal, that they can receive campaign contributions from these people, but still, you don't have to do it. Plus, if you look in our charter, section, excuse me, four oh one of the charter, it states that if we already have something in place, we don't have to adhere to something that comes from the state or somebody else. I know Mr. City Attorney tries to amend and change things in the charter behind people's backs, but this one, he didn't get to. And if you also go and look up a chartered city versus a general law city, you'll actually see that rule as well. That if you already have a city ordinance in place as a chartered city, you don't have to adhere from something from the state. The only thing that trumps the chartered city is something from the federal government. So before we take any kind of rules or laws or whatever from the city attorney, first, let's see it in writing, and then second, we need to get another opinion. You know, this, well, excuse me, Ms. Brown wants to say that as far as our commissioners, they need to have special skills or whatever. Well, we need to have special skills for some of these elected officials up here. Ms. Brown is not aware of the history of this city and as far as dope and whatever here, but she wants to push this on us right now. And no, we don't want this here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boon. Thank you, Ms. Boon. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to speak?
Uh, that's it? Do you want, you want to take, you want to have a motion to take?
Agenda order?
Take the agenda order and just go to it?
Sure. I thought you were going to speak in response to what Councilwoman Sharif had read.
She wants me to talk about...
Okay, I'm sorry.
This, so we might as well.
Okay. May we have a, a motion to waive the order of the agenda? Second. Roll call?
Councilperson Zerita?
Yes.
McCoy? Yes, Sharif.
Yes. Yes.
Madam Mayor, City Council, we have on the agenda tonight the initiative that authorizes, that proposes to legalize and regulate and establish medical and commercial marijuana activities in the city of Compton. There are two ways for an item to get to the ballot. One is by this honorable body voting something to go on the ballot, and the other is through initiative process. When the voters of your city get the required number of signatures, that is also a way for an item to either be enacted by council or get to the ballot. And that's what we have here. We have an item that was not authorized by City Council, was not proposed by City Council, and is completely independent of the council. The, the signatures were turned in to the city clerk. The city clerk did her due diligence and has determined that there's a adequate number of signatures obtained on this initiative. So items seven through ten deal with the initiative. Item seven is required that the city clerk certify to this council the number of signatures received. And then council has three decisions, and we put each decision a separate number. So eight is the first option, nine is the second option, and ten is the third. The first option is that City Council could direct me to prepare an ordinance consistent with the initiative without alteration. This would put the initiative straight on the books. The second option is for City Council to authorize a special election to be held. The election, the date for the election would need to be at least eighty-eight days away and no more than a hundred and three days away according to the Elections Code. And number ten is that City Council can request a report. And the report can deal with the fiscal impact of the initiative. It can deal with other concerns that council may have. And staff has thirty days to prepare the report and bring it back to council for their review. At that time, council then would have only two options. Straight to ordinance or authorize a special election. So again, this initiative is through the signature gathering option or route to council, and it's not a council-requested or prepared item. Do you have any questions?
My concern with this is that, the reason I asked you to share that information because I understand how the community feel in regards to this. However, one of the things I think we need to let the community know is that when a community, when the citizens actually sign a petition, my question is, does that, that petition that was signed, if it's passed, does it override what the council have done?
Yes.
It does override?
Yes.
Which means...
A voted-in initiative would take precedent over...
Take precedence over what the county, our ordinance that we have in place now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I just wanted to make that very clear, because the petition that we have here was actually, this petition was signed by the citizens of Compton. Am I correct?
The requirement is for registered voters in the city are only, are the only ones authorized to sign the petition.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional council questions or comments?
So, so just one question I have. The signatures, I guess, Madam Clerk, the signatures were verified and then those signatures were turned in for the initiative?
Yes.
So will it be on the November ballot?
No.
Do we know which, when it'll be in the election?
We have to say.
As the city attorney stated, it's eighty-eight days up until a hundred and, I believe it's eight days.
Hundred and three.
Hundred and three days.
A hundred and?
Yeah, so an election can happen any time in between that time.
From the date it was certified, from the county, are you, has it been certified?
Well, depending on which option you choose, tonight. So if you were to choose option?
Two.
Two, then we call for an election.
But no matter what we do, there's still going to be an election?
Ultimately, yes. Ultimately.
Right, ultimately.
Thank you.
Unless you choose option one.
And we do what?
If we choose option one.
Unless you choose option one, then there's no election.
Just adopt the item.
I got you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we choose option three, then that, you have thirty days to prepare a report giving us the impact of the community, and so then it will be scheduled after that report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We're on the items, so we can just roll.
Oh, so item, I think we need to start with item number seven, which is the certification of the petition for the initiative measure to legalize, regulate, and establish taxes on medical and commercial marijuana activities and businesses in the city of Compton. And again, this is just to receive and file the certification that we received.
Are you talking about on number seven?
Yes, and for the record, I'll read the number, read the amount. The total number of signatures that was filed, that we counted by raw count, just means we face valued, and it was eight thousand five hundred and twenty-one, so that's what they turned in. We requested a full check of all signatures, and the county found that there was eight thousand six hundred and eleven. And also based on the number of sufficient signatures, it was seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven signatures that were valid. Insufficient signatures was six hundred and forty-four. Insufficient because there were duplicate signatures was one hundred and twenty-nine. And the total number of signatures required to call for a special election was, so they needed six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. Yes.
Six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven, that's what they needed?
They needed six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven to make it to the ballot, and they received sufficient seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, okay.
Yes. So this, this is just to receive and file the sufficiency of the amount of signatures on the petition.
Second. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number eight is option one, which is to accept it with no alterations.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
This is on option number one. Councilperson Zarita.
No.
McCoy.
No.
Sharif.
No.
Mayor Brown.
No.
On option number two, which is item number nine, and this will be to call for a special election, and?
No.
Motion?
I mean, sumo.
I'm reading my notes.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Councilperson Zarita?
Voting?
Yes, this is on item number nine, option two.
No.
McCoy?
No.
Sharif?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
And item number ten is option number three, which is to give the city attorney thirty days for an impact.
Sumo.
Second. Additional discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, we may also consider, given the cost of the elections, we may want to look at all-male election. It may be, we may at least add it to the report to come back with the cost, to see if it saves the city money. As a suggestion.
So, Mr. City Attorney? When, if this item three is approved by the council, giving you thirty days to do what you need to do, does that put the election date from the initiative on hold?
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes, to number three.
Item number ten, option three, okay.
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
We have, we're on closed session.
Yes.
We have several items for a closed-session discussion. There are conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. First is De Zarita versus City of Compton, case number B C three-one-nine-eight-seven-four, pursuant to California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-A. And then conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation for potential cases pursuant to California Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B. Requesting a motion, and also discussion on when you'd like to go in the closed session, given the number of matters.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? You need an answer as to when we're going into closed session?
I just thought, given the?
Oh, okay.
We may want to?
Is there, would the council like to break the closed session or continue with the items, and then have closed session after the council meeting?
We can continue with the council meeting, however.
Just finish the items?
Finish them, yes.
All right. Sounds good. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
We're at consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number four, it was requested to bring back Federal Rents Advisory and Planning Commission, so they're before you, for removal and/or appointments. Items four and five.
I'm going to ask if that being tabled, because Councilwoman Galvane is not here.
And part of item number five is to accept the resignation of Mary Edwards from the Block Club Commission. She doesn't wish to serve on that commission.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
This is just for Mary Edwards?
Yes.
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Under City Manager's Report, item number six is a request to reschedule the public hearing to receive comments on the city's comprehensive fee schedule, requesting that hearing to be October the tenth, twenty seventeen, at five-thirty-five P M.
Sumo.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And under new business, item number twelve is a resolution of City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to enter into a multi-year professional service agreement with and establish a purchase order for Texas Environmental Compliance Services for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Compliance Program Services in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? Mr. City Manager, could you explain this item for the public?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. This item involves state regulation compliance with stormwater runoff for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Compliance Program. There's a number of things that the cities and municipalities have to report to the state regarding stormwater runoff. This contract allows us to continue to pay for the technician that monitors those discharges for us.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions from the council? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of City Council, City of Compton, authorizing the city manager to renew a professional service agreement with and issue a purchase order to Strategic Council, P L C, for state legislative advocacy services, and to assist in promoting the interests of the city of Compton to legislative entities in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I was, I know there's been some, some issues, some concerns and some talk in regards to the amount of money that we are paying on a monthly basis regarding this. Now, I, what I did is that I took a look at the backup material that's here, in the, in our back that I'm reading, and I'm looking at cities, the size of Compton are pretty much close to the size of Compton and what they, oops. Close to the size of Compton, and doing, doing a comparison to those cities, and so that's, that, in looking at it, from what I can tell, Compton seemed to be in the same range as with other people, other cities, and so I don't, is there, so this is the only information that I have, is what I received right here, is that, is there any other information that someone had that can be shared with this council? Because in looking at it, I just took a look at Inglewood, I took a look at Carson, and some other cities that is very close in, in population-wise with the city of Compton, and in looking at them, we seem to be in, pretty much in the same range as with everybody else, from what I can tell.
I have one question. This, the chart that we received with the retainers on there, it actually lists the cities, and then it lists the quarterly fees, and that's a little bit confusing, because for instance, I know for a fact that the city of Inglewood, their annual contract that they pay with their lobbyists are just thirty thousand dollars. And so this quarterly fee that's listed says seventeen thousand dollars, and you would assume that if you multiply seventeen times four, you're going to get fifty-eight thousand, which is not accurate. And so I want to ask that this item be pulled and brought back accurately, as well as Carson. I know that Carson, they pay less than a hundred thousand dollars, and I, let me take a step back. I sit on the Joint Powers Authority for the city's casino, and I'm a member with many other cities that have casinos within their communities. And one of the discussions that we've had in a public forum, which is how much their lobbyists actually cost, because we actually, as cities, we pay into the Joint Powers Authority to protect our interests regarding, and really our sole interest is about revenue for the city and the casinos. And so there was actually a poll done with all of the cities that are members, and there are several cities similar size, some are a little bit larger, but all the cities that were in represented, they reported something very different than what's stated in this, this monthly retainer chart. And so my question is, number one, why would we be looking at how much we're paying quarterly instead of annually? We're talking about annual dollars, not quarter, quarterly dollars. So that's an issue, but I can say that there's some, some errors here, and I want to ask that this come back and be accurate, and I'll also be checking to ensure that it's correct.
If it's on a quarterly basis, would that, every quarter, that's what they paying? Am I reading this correctly? Every quarter is that what they paying, Mr. City?
Yeah, yeah.
City Attorney?
I just have to add, we, we did have a quarterly column, we also have a monthly column next to it, if that?
But what it breaks down to. So from my understanding, I could be wrong, so what I'm understanding, you have your quarterly fee, and then it says what that breaks down to monthly. And so basically, it's dividing whatever that quarterly fee is, but not everyone pays their lobbyist quarterly. They, most cities have annual contracts, not quarterly contracts. And so this monthly breakdown is just dividing the quarterly fee by twelve. Instead of looking at what the annual fee is and dividing that by twelve, you're going to get a different number. It's, it's a little misleading for me.
So if we take what we're paying here and divide it by twelve, we get?
I believe that the monthly breakdown is on a yearly basis, not dividing the quarterly number. And some cities have multiple lobbyists. When you see that number divided by, with the line?
Right.
Maybe that's the confusing aspect, I'm not sure.
I just want to make sure that this number is correct, that was reported, because again, I, I have different numbers. As recent as, less than six months ago, so I don't think that the number's changed that much.
What's the pleasure of the council? Do you want to vote, or you want to?
Well, what my concern has been, is that I know this contract was supposed to came back in June, June thirtieth, and we're now here in September, and we really don't have any, we just, we're still paying them on a monthly basis anyway. So I just didn't understand why, you know, I'm looking at it, I'm trying to calculate it, I think all of us want to make sure that we are, trying to make sure that we are using the taxpayers' dollars in the best, best we can, but in calculating, I've still seen me coming up with, with the amount, so I just didn't understand, if there's something different. I, I just don't have it, and so this is the information that I have. I, I don't have an issue with, with, with the contractor, I really don't. If, if the city manager has been working with them, Mr. City Manager, can you maybe give us what your thoughts are in regarding this?
They, this is a not-to-exceed amount, so it may not go to the hundred thousand dollars. I do know in Carson, we paid about a hundred thousand dollars, if you look at that, that chart back there. Again, it's, it's really on a not-to-exceed amount. There are a number of things that the lobbyist does for municipalities, everybody knows here on the dais, that they often meet personally with some of the legislators, they follow bills through the House and through the legislative, legislative process to let us know what we should support, what we shouldn't support. They send out notices to us. I think they are, they provide a service, now whether or not you want to work with this company or any other company, I do believe that a lobbyist is, is really needed in a municipality.
I'm going to call for a question.
Are there any, is there any additional discussion?
Again, just for, for the record publicly, I have no issue with Strategic Council, I've worked very well with them for the last four years. This is about checks and balances, and I won't sit by, and I know that the answer is something totally different. And obviously, we all have relationships with other cities. Sitting on the D S, just texting my fellow mayor, and just to confirm that the information his city manager provided me was accurate, and this, this is not accurate. And so it's up to the pleasure of the council. We bring things back all the time to confirm information, and what I understand, I'm sure it will be no different next week, if, if this information is accurate, from what staff is saying. But I, I know for a fact that this is not accurate, and it is up to the pleasure of the council. Any additional discussion?
The city manager is also part of the J P A. Are you having any additional information, Mr. City Attorney? City Manager, I'm sorry.
On the gaming J P A? Is that what you're asking about?
I think that's what she was referring to, I think J, J P A? I think that's what she was referring to, about the G. J. P. A. I'll be like...
So the, the gaming J. P. A., our bill for that is a little different, it's about thirty thousand dollars, um, but we divide that amongst, uh, the other cities that work with us. I don't know what the total bill for that lobbyist is, but I do know we, we pay a portion of that.
So that's something different?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roca?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Item number fourteen, under approval of warrants, warrant number two-four-one-three-six-zero, August twenty-ninth, Clean, Clean Street, for citywide street sweeping in the amount of forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and sixteen cents requested by Public Works. Warrant number two-four-one-three-six-one, August twenty-ninth, Craft Co. for asphalt used to fill potholes in the amount of six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents requested by Public Works. Warrant number two-four-one-three-nine-two, August the twenty-ninth, Trimming, Trimming Land Company Tree Maintenance Services in the amount of twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars requested by Public Works. Warrant number two-four-one-four-zero-nine, August the thirty-first, Strategic, Strategic Council P. L. C. State Legislative Advocacy Services in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars requested by the city manager. Total amount of warrants, eighty-seven thousand, seven fifty-six and ninety-one cents.
So moved for discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
I have, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, I just had a quick collect question about, um, Clean Street. Mister City Manager, can you tell me where we are with the R. F. Ps for street sweeping?
I believe we were, uh, going to bring that back. I know, uh, Director Cow is going to revise that, and I think the revisions you guys wanted was the, um, whether or not they were going to provide new equipment, and I know one company was, was much higher than the other, um, bidders, so we're going to put that, uh, back out. But I'll report back to you guys, um, publicly next week, and I'll send you an updated email in the next couple of days.
Okay, 'cause I think, um, I would like to see a small audit done on the street sweeping, the quality of the street sweeping, if we maybe can have, uh, I don't know if it would be code enforcement or somebody to follow the street sweeper for a couple of days, just to see, um, 'cause I get a lot of complaints about the, you know, not picking up the trash or the water, not squirting, if we can just kind of do an assessment of the quality of service.
Council, I spoke with the mayor also about this, and I did have a meeting with Clean Sweep, uh, just so the council was aware. There's a GPS tracking, uh, program that we'll be taking a look at that allows you to follow the trucks. They did talk about the water, uh, they assured me that there was water, but I reminded them that people watch them, and if there's no water, then what they say versus what we see are two different things. There's also some monitoring that has started coming to my attention, so when they can't sweep, or, and this is a reminder for the listening audience, that when you, uh, you should not put your lawn debris out into the curb, uh, so when you cut your lawn, that your gardeners are, some of the gardeners are blowing the, the green debris out into the street, and they can't pick that up, um, branches, mud, things like that, so they have to go around that. And then also, parking enforcement is aware, um, about making sure that the cars are removed so they can clean. So, um, I'll bring back, uh, the, the web link so that you guys can watch, and I'll put it on the website so that people can follow the street sweeper, and then I'll bring back a report for the last six months.
But, you know, that's great, but I was speaking, uh, follow it to actually survey, not the GPS to know where, what streets it went down and what streets it missed, but to actually follow it to take a, a survey as to whether the water is working, uh, the trash is being picked up.
Right, that's a quality control, uh, assessment, so we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
I understand that was done already, wasn't it? Did you guys finish it or no?
No, I haven't seen, I haven't seen the report on the, on someone actually following the truck. I haven't seen someone, I haven't seen that report yet, so I'll get with Lance Williams on that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I know that I, in my district, I have not, I kind of follow along in some of the areas, and there is no water. There is no water.
Absolutely, I reported the same thing, which is why we brought them in, um...
It just seemed, it seemed to be citywide.
It's citywide.
District four, same thing.
Okay.
It's like they're cleaning, but they're...
They're just sweeping.
They're just sweeping, they're not washing the streets.
Right.
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Uh, yes. Um, uh, I just want to make sure, I guess something clarified here is that under the, the invoice for Strategic Council, I noticed that there, you, you marked through, is it nine thousand, eight thousand dollars that we're paying here, uh, Mister City Manager? Because the invoice here said for July first. And, uh, it appears that we already paid previously, from what I can tell.
So it looks, I'm sorry, so there, it looks like we paid, uh, one amount, nine thousand dollars, right, and we owed them another nine thousand.
Right, but, but I'm, so we, we need to make the correction on here because it states it's eight thousand dollars that we are proving.
So when you look at the, uh, I'm sorry, so eighteen...
Eighteen.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, and it should be nine thousand.
It should be nine, that's right, that's what I'm asking for, as to, uh...
Oh, this, let me, you know what, we should probably bring, at least, we have two, July and August here, but when I looked at the comment you just made, I don't know why they car, crossed out the nine thousand. We have a representative from, uh, Strategic, Mel, are you, can you speak on this? Do we...
That's done by the control, doesn't it? Right here, clearly, it's clear it states payments and credits between June first and two thousand seventeen and July first, two thousand seventeen, nine thousand dollars, is what it states here on the invoice.
Oh, there's two nine thousand ones.
Right.
That's probably because we did the month-to-month.
Uh, that's why we're doing the month, that's, that's...
Miss McCain?
But this year will be deducted from the contract.
Nita, can you come up and explain?
Right.
Explain this real quick? As I'm looking at the actual invoice, it looks like they crossed out eighteen thousand for one, one month, and then eighteen thousand for another month, right, so...
That's two different ones, so...
Oh, I see.
That's what I mean. Also, she's separated.
Oh, okay. I get it. So the invoice doesn't show here, though.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what she's doing, okay. I just wanted, just make sure.
Okay, this one...
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, it looks as though we owe for two months. The initials on this are actually from the city manager's office, but it looks as though we owe for the month of June and the month of July, is my...
So we owe for June and July?
We owe for the month of June and the month of July, which would be eighteen thousand.
Okay, thank you, all right.
All right, I see the two dates here. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nita.
Any additional discussion? Roca?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
You had council comments?
Thank you. Councilman Galvin?
Oh, you know, I, last week I made an announcement about having a luncheon for the seniors, but after a meeting with the Parks and Recs director, they thought that it was almost impossible to put an event together so fast, um, with, with less than a week's notice, so I want to apologize to the seniors, um, we won't be having the luncheon tomorrow like we had planned, like I had planned last week, um, but we'll make it up to them in October for, um, Halloween or something like that, uh, so I want to apologize to them, and, um... Oh, Mister City Manager, I also want to, again, uh, ask if you got a status on the basketball court at Caesar Chavez Park?
That is, um, I believe, Marv, did you put out a R. F. P. on that one? I have the director come up, and then I went, I met yesterday, met with you yesterday on the court and observed it myself.
You know that homeless lady never moves, just though they're Mercedes? Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Marvin Hunt, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, yes, sir, we've already ordered the backboard and the pole assembly for Caesar Chavez, just waiting on the parks to come in. The company has already given us a date for the court resurfacing, which will be September twenty-sixth. September twenty, so next Saturday? Is it next Saturday, something like that? No, September twenty-sixth is on a Tuesday. It's a Tuesday? Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah, 'cause it's really dangerous, and maybe it's probably even better to shut it down, the court, 'cause people were just falling left and right yesterday, and I was one of them. It's really unsafe for the kids to play on it.
Yeah, if you, if you would like to shut it down, you can.
Maybe you can make an assessment, and... We'll go out tomorrow, we do have some, uh, material that we can put on the court to give it some type of, uh, grip feel until September twenty-sixth, so we'll take a look at it tomorrow. Kids don't even play with the, the right shoes, they play with like, uh, skateboarding shoes and stuff, and, uh, they're falling, so it's kind of funny, but, uh, yeah. We'd definitely go out and take a look at it tomorrow, sir. All right, thank you, Marv. And then also, um, another announcement I wanted to, uh, I promised, uh, Ms. Johnson I would shout out the stand-down they're having this Saturday, and, uh, since I'm not going to be able to, uh, have the senior luncheon tomorrow, I'm going to make a financial contribution to the event that they're going to have this Saturday, 'cause I know it will service a lot of our seniors that we have in the city as well, so, um, I hope everybody makes it out. I think it's Friday and Saturday, right?
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday at the, the old city hall, so I hope everybody comes out and volunteers, and, uh, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Galvin. Councilwoman Zarita?
Um, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone that supported me in the recall effort, and thank the citizens that stood up and voiced their concerns about being misled and actually just straight-out lied to. So our people in our community that I represent are not as naive and foolish as some people think they are. So once again, (applause), thank you all for believing in me and my family who has served this community for sixty-plus years, and I'll continue to serve as I always have. I'll be hosting a town hall meeting on Saturday, September sixteenth, at Seabree Park, from eleven A. M. to twelve P. M. to twelve noon. Those of you that live in the surrounding area of Seabree Park, I hope you can come out so you can hear the facts on the plans for the park. We'll have the water department there that'll give their real numbers on the completion of almost a ten-year project that started out as a two-year project, and Parks and Rec will be there to talk about the plans for the restoring of the Seabree Park, Public Works, uh, city manager staff, code enforcement, everyone will be at the park, so this is the opportunity, if you have any questions or concerns as it relates to Seabree Park, the water reservoir, and the baseball diamond. I encourage you to come out, ten A. M., I mean, excuse me, eleven A. M. Saturday, September sixteenth, will be right in the park, on the location. And coming up, time is moving fast, um, the sixth annual Walk for a Cure. My sister, Satcha Zarita, schoolboy president, and myself will be co-hosting the sixth annual Compton Walk for a Cure, Saturday, October fourteenth. Registration begins at seven, the walk begins at eight-thirty A. M. Location is Greenleaf Parkway, that's at the corner of Wilmington and Greenleaf. There'll be free parking, free registration, free T-shirts for everyone. We have limited space on mammograms at the site, so those of you that are unsure of your insurance coverage with everything that's going on with our Obamacare and our health coverage, this is your opportunity, ladies and men, to come out and get a free mammogram on Saturday, October fourteenth, but you need to call in and reserve your spot, 'cause spots are limited, and if there is something detected, we'll take the walk with you. So those of you, early detection is the key, and that's the key to surviving breast cancer. And I'd like to just say, for the record, sometimes when you're an elected official, you have to talk about some of the things that are not so comfortable to talk about, and you have to talk about some of the things that people just don't want to talk about, people afraid to talk about, or people are just ignorant to talk about, they don't have the facts. But I would just encourage everyone to get educated on the marijuana situation. Almost seventy percent of Compton residents voted yes on Prop sixty-four, so that speaks great numbers in a community. And I'd also encourage folks to go on the website, www.bmcr.ca.gov, the Bureau of Medical Cannabis Regulations. There's going to be so many changes made in January, that's gonna just supersede everything that we have here, and that's why it's really important for you as citizens to respect us as elected officials, to make some decisions as it relates to cannabis and, and the rules and the regulations. So, you know, stay tuned, educate yourself so that when you come up to the mic and bash us, or don't really disagree or understand some of the decisions that we may be forced to make, if you read a little bit and educate yourself a little bit, it's a little easier to understand. And my time is up, and I'm gonna, um, end with that, so everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zarita? Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. Please come out and join me on Saturday, September sixteenth, where we'll be continuing our walk to clean the Compton Creek. The Compton Creek Task Force will join, um, residents and, um, staff, and on Saturday the sixteenth, eight A. M., we'll meet at Gonzalez Park in the front lot, and we'll go from there and we'll clean that section of the park. We have done, um, several cleanups thus far, and we continue, we will continue to clean up until we've cleaned up the entire creek. I guess the word is getting out because I'm getting a lot of calls and saying, hey, you forgot my section, but we're going to get there, so we're going to clean up the entire creek, and then afterward, we're going to do something to kick off to show that people, that we can go out there and walk again, and it's going to be cleaned, and we're encouraging everyone to, you know, when you're walking, if you see a piece of paper, please pick it up, we're gonna, we're talking about putting trash cans there, so you'll have someplace to put it, but we'll be continuing our journey to clean up the creek. The Compton Business Chamber is having a Business Network meeting on Wednesday, September twentieth, at, um, twelve noon, at ten-thirty-eight West Compton Boulevard, Mister Hollyfield is sponsoring that event, and, um, Compton College is having their ninetieth anniversary and their homecoming festival on September thirtieth, beginning at eleven A. M. And finally, Mayor, I'd like to adjourn in memory of James Edward McMillan Junior, um, it's my cousin, and he passed away, um, two days ago, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy, and our condolences. Councilwoman Sharie?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. On Saturday, September the ninth, uh, District Four hosted our second annual back-to, um, back-to-school backpack giveaway. Uh, we gave away over, we had over, way over six hundred youth and elders that participated as the students received backpacks filled with the school supplies. We also provided way over three hundred, uh, pairs of shoes for the, uh, first arrivals, and we extend our special appreciation to Senator Steve Bradford for attending and providing encouraging remarks to the students, and also to Assembly Member Mike Gibson's office for recognizing and providing certificates to the sponsors. Uh, Compton-based businesses were true heroes for this marvelous event, who served as the top sponsors in sharing their respective goods and services to the community. The members that was in attendance was the L. A. County Sheriff, Compton Youth Activities League, and I want to, uh, definitely... And I want to, uh, definitely thank, uh, Deputy Dale Harkless for providing the jumpers, rock climbing wall, Ralph prizes, the Sheriff's Explorer Volunteers, and music by DJ Steve, uh, there. And I, Heart to Heart Compton Social Club, uh, Kathy Jones, founder, for donating the shoes. Heavenly Hands, Tammy Hall, for the delicious popcorn and cookie bags. Brittany Gooden for providing free manicures for the girls. LSL for face painting, she did a marvelous job. And Nina, uh, from Sarina, uh, from Sarita's College for providing fifteen barbers and hair, and, um, hairstylists. And El Pollo, El Pollo Local for the fantastic complimentary lunch. Gris Miles, Travis Tremel for providing free dental hygiene assessments. Uh, Compton Business, Compton, um, Compton Business Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Holyfield, I want to thank you for providing a generator and extension cords because we, without that, they would not have been able to get the work done. And I also want to thank and recognize the Compton Fire Explorers, General Service, and most certainly Parks and Recreation Staff for a job well done. Thank you. And as all you know, the Veteran Stand Down is, uh, will be here this coming weekend, uh, September 16th through the 18th. At 700 North Bullets Road, doors open at 6:00 a.m., so please come out and be a part of this. District 4 Community Town Hall Meeting, our next, uh, uh, Community Town Hall Meeting is Wednesday, which is tomorrow, September the 13th, at Kelly Park, 2319 East Carlwell Street. The City Attorney Craig Carnwell will provide, uh, marijuana education and awareness workshop, so please come out and, and get as much information as you can so you can be informed as to, uh, what you will be voting on once it's put on the ballot. This is an interactive meeting where you will have the opportunity to ask questions, voice opinions, and submit concerns regarding public safety and quality of life issues. Uh, the County Sanitation District, the District, the, uh, Sanitation Districts have a special certificate of recognition program which honors in industries that have been in full compliance uh, with all sanitation districts' industrial waste requirements. The City of Compton is host to fourteen of these companies that have met their limits for waste, water discharge for at least a year, maintain their environmental equipment, and fulfill all permit requirements. Of those honorees operating in Compton, only two companies have the distinction of performing for five or more consecutive years at that level. EME Plating for ten years, and Foster Poultry Farms for eight years. I want to commend them on that. And I would like to also close in memory of, uh, Paul Henry, that was Mr. Craig Henry's brother. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. I'm sorry, my next, uh, third district next town hall meeting will be on October 12th at 6:00 p.m. at Burrell McDonald Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a, uh, couple of comments or announcements. Parks and Recreation is having a benefits fair at Dollar Hide this Thursday. And, uh, somehow they got me to do a Tai Chi demonstration at 11:30. Um, so we'll see how that goes. And my class on Fridays at 8:30 in the morning at Dollar Hide, we're going into our fifth year. Um, we're coming off a few weeks of, um, where class was canceled, so returning students, classes coming back. And for those that may be interested, it's, uh, at Dollar Hide Friday at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Um, I just have a few quick announcements. Um, we had our Compton Open Mic Night last Thursday, and a big thank you to everybody that came out, and to city staff for, um, helping to prepare. Um, also for our upcoming events, the Rhodes Foundation, they're having their first annual Back to School and Wellness Health Fair. Um, and it is, excuse me, they had their Back to School Health and Wellness Fair, which was on the 9th. Um, and they had, um, about two hundred Compton residents, um, turnout, which is, um, a pretty good turnout. They were able to service, um, all of their constituents. And, um, moving forward, they would like to do more in the community to service the community. And for those that do not know, they provide free transportation to, um, anyone that is in need of those services. And, um, news and announcements, we, um, definitely as a nation, we've been praying for everyone, um, Florida, Texas, um, and throughout the, the nation for all of the natural disasters. And, um, for those that, um, would like to donate, there are many organizations, um, to contribute to. And I'm just asking that you, um, do a little bit of research, and for those that want information, there are sites that are now verifying, um, the amount of money that each organization actually provides to victims. And so, um, that information is available, um, at handandhand2017.com. Also, um, there was commentary regarding, um, DACA, and many people don't, um, really understand what DACA is. And so, just really quickly, it's a deferred action for childhood arrivals, and it was approved, um, back in 2012. The Secretary of Homeland Security announced that certain people who came into the United States as children and meet several guidelines may request consideration of deferred action for a period of two years, subject to renewal. They are also eligible for work authorization. Deferred action is a use of prosecutorial discretion to defer removal action against an individual for a certain period of time. Deferred action does not, um, provide lawful status. And so Trump, President Trump's DACA action, um, which was effective, will put into law on September 5th, which ordered an end to the Obama-era program, which shields, um, young people, young adults, and children that are undocumented or immigrants from deportation, and calling it an amnesty-first approach. And so as of March, um, of this year, officials said some eight hundred thousand young adults brought to the U.S. illegally as children who qualify for the program will become eligible for deportation. And this five-year policy allows them to remain without fear for immediate removal from the country and gives them the right to work legally. And so, obviously, there are about a million children that are impacted. Um, this provides authorization to work in the United States. And this, um, many people think that this is only, um, a Latino issue, and it is not. Um, there are many people from all ethnic backgrounds that are impacted and that have come into the country with DACA, that are here with DACA, and that need DACA to continue to be here, um, and to keep those families whole. And so, just wanted to give a little bit of information, and also to make everyone aware that if, if you know of people that are, um, utilizing DACA or have utilized DACA, there is a deadline approaching October 5th of this year in order to, um, be able to extend DACA for an additional two years before that, um, deadline. And so, there is about a month. Um, we've reached out to our congressperson, and, um, I believe that there are going to be some, um, community meetings, um, regarding DACA, giving people the information that they need. And so as soon as we get that information, we will share. Um, but I did want to kind of clarify and give a little bit of additional information. Um, under constituent concerns, we just, Pajos are always, um, an issue, and not so much vocally now, but want to just keep the city's attention to the main thoroughfares, especially those that lead up to the freeway, because there are some safety concerns along Central and Wilmington. There is still a, a very large, um, pothole that, uh, cars are having to divert in order to stay in a straight line, and it, it's just a dangerous situation. So I'm just putting this on the radar again. Thank you. Also, I will save those, and I just wanted to say, um, while we still have the majority of the council still here, um, heard, heard one of the constituents, um, that brought up the Veteran Stand Down. And my understanding, this is the fourteenth Veteran Stand Down, and they have, um, really operated without a lot of city support, but they definitely service our veterans. And we know our veterans keep us safe. Freedom is not free, and I'm hoping that the city will, um, consider. And so I'm, I'm going to request if we can bring an item back for Tuesday, um, for the city to officially accept the Veteran Stand Down as an annual city event, and also to provide some monetary support for the Veteran Stand Down. Um, because, again, no one's making a profit for the Veteran Stand Down. This is purely to service those that have served our country. And so we can have something come back on Tuesday for the council to support. Um, and I'm just going to ask my colleagues, colleagues, the colleagues, you know, we all have, um, some resources within our special events, and if we would consider supporting so that they can really meet the needs, um, coming up this week. And so, I just wanted to say that publicly, and I'm hoping that we can bring an item back, um, with annual monetary support for this, um, really important, um, event. And then also to move forward so that they are not in this position again. And I just think it's unfortunate when you have to, um, really fight that hard, and, and firstly, it's worth doing it, number one, and they have no problem, they're not complaining. But I think as a city, we, um, really miss the mark a lot of times, really celebrating our servicemen and women. 9/11 just, um, passed, and we didn't have a official city event. And so, um, I think we really have to go back to some basics and make sure we give honor to whom honors do, um, and that we step in where we can to really, um, do some things that really make community, community. And so, I'm just saying publicly, I hope that you all will consider supporting, um, something coming forward to the council on Tuesday. Thank you. Um, and thank you all very much, and we will now adjourn, um, excuse me, recess to closed session. Do we need to recess in memory or we're going to close in memory?
Well, I mean, you did a motion, you don't have to, but...
Oh, okay, you can.
You can just recess.
You got it, okay. We will now adjourn the Compton City Council meeting. Excuse me, we will now reconvene the Compton City Council meeting. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, City Counsel, uh, we are coming back from a meeting in closed session, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, De Zarita versus City of Compton, case number BC319874, pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.9A. Madam Clerk, may the, uh, record reflect that Counselperson Zarita recused herself from this discussion? And the, uh, request to, um, renew the judgment in this matter failed for lack of a motion. There was also conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation for potential cases. These matters, the entire city council was present. One of the matters was a, uh, authority was granted to file an unlawful detainer against the Latino Chamber of Commerce. Again, that's a unanimous vote in that matter. The next matter was authority was granted to file a civil action uh, motion by Councilman Galvane, second by Councilperson McCoy, uh, to file a civil action against Sal Galvane and any other individual or entity believed to be, um, civilly liable for the city's, um, embezzlement, recent embezzlement matter. The final, uh... Unanimous, yes. The final matter, there's no reportable action taken. And I can...
There's only three. Did I miss one?
I'm sorry. Two matters were no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now adjourn in the memory of James Edwards McMillan Jr., um, also Paul Henry, and Sharon Chloe.
And, uh, Mayor, may I also add, Ms. Jan Barbara Dorsey?
Yes, Mayor. Yes.
Uh, also, I just got the information, Ross, Mr. Henry's, uh, and I was just...
Okay. Please.
Um, uh, Mr. Henry's, you know, will be there, so step in.
It will be Thursday, September 21st, uh, at 11:00 a.m. And the location is, will be a Love, Peace, and Happiness Family Christian Fellowship. And that is located at 11022. That's 11022 Old River Road in Downey, California, 90241. The viewing will be Wednesday, September the 20th. Uh, and the location is Harrison Ross March Wary at 436 East Compton Boulevard, here in Compton.
Thank you, um, for sharing that.
Okay.
Thank you. Roll call?
Motion to me?
Oh, yeah, I have, I have requested a motion. I think we just need a second.
Second.
Okay.
I didn't get anything. I'm sorry.
May we have a motion to adjourn?
Some more, second.
Roll call?
Counselperson Zarita?
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Cherie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. And it is Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, 8:42 p.m., and we will now begin the Urban Community Development Commission meeting. Roll call?
Commissioner Zarita?
Here.